3 o'clock and the meeting of the Curville City Council is in session. And I want to ask folks to stand while Councilwoman Judy Eichner lead us in prayer at the pageant.
Before I actually give the prayer, I would like to share a, I guess it's a plaque that we, some friends of ours have hanging in their house. She sent it in her Christmas letter. And it says, "Wash your hands and say your prayers because Jesus and germs are everywhere." Something to keep in mind, so if you'll pray with me. Lord, as we come together tonight for our first meeting in the new year, we ask that you be with us. Guide our thoughts and our decisions, give us clarity, give us patience with the agenda and with each other as we discuss and make decisions. Give us wisdom to make decisions based only on what is right for our city and community. We ask, Lord, that you be with all of our first responders, our healthcare workers, our military, as they are asked to do what has never been asked, what they have never been asked to do before. We ask that you provide wisdom to the leaders of our state and our country, as they too are being asked to do what has not been asked before. And last, Lord, we ask that you wrap in your love those who are hurting, be it from loss of loved ones, loss of jobs, loss of hope, and help each of us, Lord, as your people, to reach out when asked in whatever way we are asked to help someone else. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being conducted virtually because of a quarantine of programming staff at the Calhoun Center here and limited space for attendees in the City Hall. I want to thank everyone listening for their patience as we continue to manage through COVID-19 outbreaks. Also, citizen or public participation continues to be available by calling via Zoom, emailing, or using the City Hall Dropbox beforehand. All of these instructions are provided online and in the agenda. If anyone present wants to speak on an item, agenda item, by now they would have been required to call or Zoom in or send in their comments before the meeting started, unless the item involves a public hearing, in which case persons wishing to speak can call in when the item is read into the record by the City Secretary. Speakers will be queued up to address the council by the City Secretary and online moderator when we get to the item they have signed up for, or a member of the staff will read their written comments previously received into the record. Note that the public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after public comments have concluded. At this time, in terms of announcements of community interest, Mr. Cunias does not have any, any council members? All right. And the presentation, the Curville Kindness Award, will await the 26th. At this time, the visitor's citizens forum, this agenda item is provided to allow citizens who have called in or submitted written comments ahead of time to address the council on any item not related to another separate agenda item. Note that no discussion may take place and no action may be taken since items are not posted. The council discussion, discuss objects raised, but may later refer questions to staff for follow-up or place on an issue on a future agenda. Individuals are reminded that you have four minutes. Ms. McLeinen, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. We do have one, Alan Amison. He is on the Zoom call. Mr. Amison, are you there? Ms. Francina, is Mr. Amison on the line?
Yes, he is. Mr. Amison?
Hi. Yes, ma'am.
Please state your name and address. Please state your name.
Okay, my name?
And address, and you now have four minutes.
Okay. My name is Alan Amison. I live at 2116 Bluff Ridge Drive here in Curville, Texas, 78028. I represent a total of 12 homeowners that live on Bluff Ridge Drive. We have submitted a petition to the city of Curville to vastly improve the water pressure on Bluff Ridge Drive, and I'd like to add also that we'd like to improve the water capacity that's at the pump station down the hill. I thank you for allowing me to address the council, and I would like to be considered to be placed on the earliest possible agenda. Thank you.
Right. Okay. We now come to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and can be approved in one motion unless a council member asks for separate consideration of an item. It is recommended that the City Council approve the following items, which will grant the mayor or city manager the authority to take all actions necessary for approval. Unless a council member pulls an item or someone has signed up to speak on a consent item, then all of these items will be voted on at one time. All right. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve for A. Do you want me, should I itemize each one?
No.
Just the consent agenda? Okay. For A, true. What is it? For H?
J.
No, for J. But I would like to make a comment on three of them. I don't want to pull them. I just would like to make a comment. For A, the appointment of an assistant city attorney. I think it's important that people know, we have been trying to get Mike to do that for a long time. That's been very, very necessary and delighted that we have finally made that happen. And then for B and for C, I just want people to understand those are budgeted items, high numbers, but the dump truck and the back on sewer vacuum trucks, so they are just in the budget.
I'll second that motion.
You what?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a second. Before we vote, we've got somebody who wants to make a comment on 4F? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Meismer will read it in.
This is an email from Pamela S. Umstead at 175 Stony Brook Road, Curville. She is a Glory Community Garden volunteer. I plan to attend the meeting in support of Barnett Chapel, Glory Community Gardens, Community Services Agreement with the city. It is an excellent plan. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor of the motion, if you would let me know by the raised hand, excuse me. All right. Now, before we go further, would someone explain what the Buy Board is? Typically, I mean, we have references from time to time, and I would imagine the general public probably does not know what that is.
Yes, thank you for asking the question, and you're right. It's something we see all the time in city government, but it's probably not familiar to a lot of people. So because government purchases are often made using taxpayer funds, the Texas Local Government Code and the city purchasing policy were developed to make sure that we're getting the best price for things. One of the things that we have to do is to get at least three bids on any item that costs more than $5,000. This same law also applies to school districts. I'll give you a little history here. So years ago, school districts in Texas realized that they buy many of the same items across all school districts and that there was a lot of administrative time being wasted with everyone having to get three bids for the same item. In addition, they thought maybe they could get some bulk quantity discount kind of things if they combined together. So a Houston-area school district region decided to form an organization that would go out and get bids for frequently purchased items, and the price offered by the lowest bidder would then be available to all of the districts in that region, and it would automatically meet the purchasing requirements because the bids were received by that organization. And then vendors might also give them a better deal because they would have a guaranteed set of districts that they knew would be able to buy from them. And so that's how purchasing co-ops were born. Now, there are many purchasing co-ops, and they're often specific to particular industries like information technology or municipality-specific. They each have their own specific rules and procedures, but they all accomplish the same goal of having the bidding done for cities so that we can get that lowest bid price, ease that administrative burden, and hopefully get some kind of quantity discounts because vendors know that they have this set of buyers that are now approved for them. So state law and the city purchasing policy both state that purchases made through a purchasing co-op are exempt from competitive bidding requirements. So that's why you don't see multiple bids on the back on or something like that. You just see the documentation that it is a purchasing co-op price. The city is a member of multiple purchasing co-ops. And so tonight, you see on your agenda the back on truck purchased through Buy Board and two dump trucks purchased through HGAC. Buy Board is one of the state's largest purchasing co-ops. It's run by the Texas Association of School Boards, and it's governed by an 11-member board with representatives from school districts, municipalities, county governments. And HGAC is a cooperative created by the Houston Galveston Area Council of Governments. So that's like the Houston equivalent of ACOG, the Alamo Area Council of Governments that we're a member of. And as far as how these cooperatives are funded, it varies from co-op to co-op, but most of the time it's the vendor that pays some sort of fee either to submit a bid or to become a member of the co-op, that kind of thing. Sometimes the buyer will have to pay a membership fee or a flat rate will be added on to the invoice itself. You'll see on the Buy Board invoice, there's a flat $400 fee there for using the Buy Board pricing. But basically, purchasing co-ops are a win-win because from the city's point of view, we're able to ease our administrative burden, get really good pricing because it's been bid through this larger organization. And then from the vendor's point of view, they know that they have, you know, approved purchasing policy compliance with any municipality if they've been awarded a bid through a purchasing co-op. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. McLeinen, if you would read in 5A.
Resolution number 022021, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a tattoo shop on the property consisting of Lot 5, Block 33 of the Shriners Edition, a subdivision of record within the city of Curville, Kerr County, Texas, and located at 215 Water Street. Said property is located within the Downtown Arts and Cultural DAC zoning district and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay, all right. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. This is a resolution for a conditional use permit for a tattoo shop in the Downtown Arts and Culture District at 215 Water Street. It is part of the Downtown Arts and Culture District. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Property is located on a collector, and so there should be limited to no traffic impact. Planning and Zoning Commission approved this case with a 6-1 vote on December 3rd. Be pleased to answer any questions before or after public hearing.
All right. Any discussion on this one, counsel? All right. If not, open the public hearing at 6:14. And you will introduce the speaker.
Yes, sir. Any citizen wishing to speak on public hearing item number 5A, please raise your hand now via the Zoom app or star nine if calling in by telephone. At this time, Citizen Danielle Lang is on the line. Ms. Lang?
Hi there. Thank you so much for the introduction, and congratulations, counsel, for your first meeting. I'm mostly here for questions regarding 5A. I just want to assure the council that the conditions, Section 2, Letter A, state licensing, that this is basically the first step to achieving that. I have to have a zoning letter in order to file for state licensing. Section 2, number B, or Letter B inspections, that falls under the line with state licensing as soon as I am registered with the State Health Department. I will forego regular inspections every six months, and I should get a certificate every time they come. And then Section 2, Letter B, other zoning regulations, I'm not really too sure what that means, but I am here if you have any questions.
Ms. Francina, is there anyone else on the line to speak on the public hearing?
Yes, we have one other caller. Caller LG Stylo6, please state your name and address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Yes, my name is Rachel Lovelace. My address is 717 Hill Entry Drive. I'm calling on behalf of Ms. Lang's tattoo shop. I am very well-involved in the arts of Curville. I work at Kerr Arts and Cultural Center, and I teach in several different areas around town. I'm just basically standing up on her behalf. I've been to the shop myself, not as a customer, but just visiting. She's done many things for the community thus far. She's had a Halloween visitation for the children, social distance-wise. It was one of the only ones that happened in town, and I'm just here as an artist myself to vouch for her and just share with you guys that I think that it would be a wonderful addition to this community, and everything that I've seen of her shop thus far and everything that she's done in this community is just a huge attribute. Thank you.
Do you have any other speakers?
Ms. Francina, are there any other public speakers?
We have no other speakers.
All right, okay. The public hearing is closed at 6:17. And do we have a motion on item 5A?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 02-2021.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second. All right. After motion second, all in favor, raise your hands, and it is unanimous. All right. The, you will read in 5B for us.
Resolution number 032021, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of approximately .37 acres comprising all of Lots 1 and 2, Block 3 of the Hillcrest Edition, a subdivision within the city of Curville and more commonly known as 900 Tybee Street. Said property is located within an R1A single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein.
Okay, Mr. Paxton?
This is a conditional use permit request at 900 Tybee for a short-term rental unit. Property is zoned R1A with the surrounding neighborhood. There are two structures on the property, so they are applying for both of those. It does meet the restrictions with the short-term rental unit as far as parking and number of bedrooms. As far as consistency with the comprehensive land use plan, it is part of a transitional residential area in the comp plan, and it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Planning and Zoning Commission approved this case on December 3rd with unanimous vote. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, okay.
Drew, I had a question. There's going to be a pool on the street side. Are there any further restrictions? When you have a pool that's, normally you think of a pool in the backyard, and it's a little more enclosed and a little more private, and maybe safety-wise, it's better. Anything that would be added because this pool is going to be in the front rather than in the back?
Any pool, under the building codes, any pool is required to meet those same safety considerations, whether it's front, side, or backyard. So we'll have to have full safety enclosure, similar plumbing, and so on as any other pool.
Mr. Paxton, can you go back to the plot? Yeah. So I'm not sure what is considered the front of this property.
The front would actually be Tybee Street.
That's because otherwise they couldn't have a fence.
Right.
Okay.
And so the pool would be in the side yard.
Side yard, okay.
And then, of course, it is double frontage, and they have frontage on the back as well for that existing structure. So they will be compliant with any fencing requirements as they go through permitting for the pool.
That's fine.
All right. Let me say that that whole area to me is very interesting, actually, from all the way from Sidney Baker to Travis. But this looks like a nice structure and, you know, has some appeal to it. Okay, anything else, counsel? All right. Open the public hearing at 6:21. Do we have anybody to speak?
We do have one citizen speaker signed up, Jennifer Wise. Ms. Wise, are you on the Zoom?
Ms. Wise, you can press star six.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you now have four minutes.
Thank you. This is Jennifer Wise, and my residence is at 154 Misty Lane, and I'm the applicant for 900 Tybee Street. My client would like to use the property as a short-term rental. I'm also a licensed Realtor with Century 21, The Hills in Curville, but a company that I own, Southern Charm Vacation Rentals, we do pool service management and hospitality services for short-term rentals only, so that would be under 30 days. And this particular property, we've been working with the owner now since last summer to come up with a plan, the pool plan, and all of that was the design work that we worked with the owner for. And to answer the question about fencing, yes, it will have a privacy fence actually around the area to obstruct the view of it and for safety. So I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have about the project, and I appreciate your consideration of the resolution.
Counsel? Any word? All right, good. We have no other speakers?
We have no other speakers.
Okay, all right. Public hearing is closed at 6:23. Is there a motion, a second, on this item?
I move that we accept Resolution number 03-2021.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor, let it be known with a raised hand. Okay, thank you, and it passes unanimously. All right, 5C, Ms. McLeinen?
Resolution number 042021, a resolution amending Resolution number 032019, which granted a conditional use permit for the property located at 200 Main Street, State Highway 27, by amending the development site plan applicable to the gasoline station, fuel cells, with car wash and convenience store. And we do have three people signed up.
Okay. All right, Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution to amend the site plan from Resolution 032019 for the conditional use permit for the gasoline station and car wash. A portion of the property is zoned Downtown Arts and Culture District, and HEB has acquired additional property zoned C2. This is part of the strategic catalyst area of one for downtown. And here's the site plan showing that separation between the Downtown Arts and Culture District and the C2. The previous site plan, the gas station and car wash, were all within the Downtown Arts and Culture District. With the additional property acquisition, they are shifting the site plan closer to Francisco Lemos. The only portion of the gas station that is still within the Downtown Arts and Culture District with the underground storage tanks and a slight overhang of the fuel canopy. The balance of it will be on C2 property, which is a permitted use by right. So we are just amending that to include the area, see shaded here, which is, again, the underground storage tanks and a two-to-three-foot overhang on the gas canopy. Planning and Zoning Commission approved it on December 3rd with unanimous vote. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after public hearing.
All right.
Ms. Paxton, just remind me, where was this originally located on the original site plan?
So the original fuel station was located roughly in this area, just above that titled DAC. And the car wash is actually closer to Jefferson, on the backside of the parking lot.
Yes.
So as you can see, the new site plan, fuel station will be closer to Francisco Lemos and Main Street. The car wash is immediately behind it.
Okay.
I'm delighted to see this. It'll add more to the parking lot, so it's much, much better, so. And also a shout-out to HEB for as fast as they took down the old store. They did a great job, so.
All right, counsel, do you have questions, other questions? All right. Public hearing is open at 6:26. Do we have any, we have three speakers?
Any citizen wishing to speak on public hearing item number 5C, please raise your hand now via the Zoom app or star nine if calling in by telephone. And yes, sir, I'm sorry, we have two speakers. They're representatives. If you would like to speak with them about any questions?
No, it's all good.
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Ms. Francina, do we have anyone with their hand raised?
No, we do not.
No, sir.
6:27, the public hearing is closed, and I ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept Resolution or approve Resolution 04-2021.
Second.
All right, we got a second.
Second.
All right, Kim seconded, okay. All right, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by the raised hand, and it's unanimous. All right. You would read in 6A for us.
Ordinance number 2021-02, public hearing and first reading. An ordinance vacating, abandoning, and closing a public right-of-way consisting of a portion of a 16-foot wide alley, which was originally located in its entirety behind Francisco Lemos Street and Hay Street, said portion consisting of approximately .0508 acre out of Block 48 of the Charles Shriners Second Edition to the city of Curville, making a finding that the alley is not required for present or future public use, authorizing the city manager to take all necessary action to effectuate that vacation, abandonment, closure, and quitclaim, and providing for a public hearing. We do have three people, three people signed up for this public hearing.
Okay. Ms. Paxton?
This is a portion of the alley surrounded by the HEB property, just same property we just looked at. You see it highlighted here. It is in the middle of the original conditional use permit, and this was originally an alley that connected Francisco Lemos to Hay Street, a majority of which has already been closed through multiple previous actions by council. Curville 2050 Plan calls for the city to look at opportunities to help existing local businesses expand their operations and to achieve overall goal of broadening and diversifying the tax base to assist in simulating land for downtown investments. And there should be a strong focus on redevelopment and catalyzing a renewed public interest in the area for downtown. And so this is, as HEB has worked on this rebuild project, this is just a small piece of that. This is, as you can see on the screen there, about 2,200 square feet of the alley that's currently paved as part of the parking lot, and just the process to close that and deed that over to HEB.
I'm curious why it says from Lemos, between Lemos and Hayes. That's a long distance, and I think you may have referenced that, but... That's a, that's a long distance and I think you may have referenced that, but, I mean, because it essentially goes up to, what was Rodriguez Street?
That's correct. The original plat, this alley went from Francisco Lemos to Hayes. There's a portion of it closed, I believe in the 80s, and another portion closed with the Hayes Street closure. And so this is the other end of the block that has not been closed.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, counsel, questions?
Just to say, this is also a good thing.
It was, it's interesting to me, just because I researched old maps and things, that there are alleyways in the center of town and old town Kerrville that are between many of the streets that you wouldn't even know were there. And a lot of them have been abandoned and a lot of them haven't, so there's some property, it's always interesting to me to see this. The piece of history, I guess.
Okay, okay. We have speakers?
Yes, sir.
You want to open the public hearing?
Do what?
Open the public hearing.
Oh. 6:31, the public hearing is open.
Two of the speakers are representatives of this ordinance, if you have any questions. Any citizen wishing to speak on public hearing item number 6A, please raise your hand now via the Zoom app or star nine if calling in by telephone. And we have one previously signed up speaker, Roman Garcia. Mr. Garcia, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Please state your name, address, and you now have four minutes.
A staff member, a question already, so I'll go ahead and skip my turn on this one. Thank you.
Oh, okay, could you repeat that, sir? We could, I couldn't understand what you were saying.
I feel like I heard him say a staff member already answered the question, so I'll skip my turn on this one. Would that be potentially?
Let's try our work time, see if we can get him back. I like the mature.
Mr. Garcia, let's try to reaffirm what you were stating.
Yes, ma'am, he's still on the line.
Okay.
Mr. Garcia?
Roman, we want to hear your comment and so I hope you can get through to us.
He has dropped off.
Okay, perhaps he'll call back. Ms. Francina does have his identification, so if he does call back, hopefully we'll just, you know.
Okay, all right, all right. Any other speakers?
Ms. Francina, does anyone else have their hand raised?
No, Ms. McLeannan, we have no one else.
Okay.
All right. The public hearing is closed at 6:33. I will say that even though we'll proceed with this, if Mr. Garcia is able to somehow get through to us, we'd like to hear him. All right. Okay, counsel, what do you want to do with this one?
I would like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2021-02.
Second.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, second, okay. HEB is really going to like you with all of these motions.
Yes, I like HEB.
All right, all right. All in favor of this motion, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, and it is unanimous. All right. Go to 6B.
Ordinance. Ordinance number 2021-01, public hearing and first reading. An ordinance annexing an approximate 33.81 acre tract of land out of the Samuel Wallace survey number 113, abstract number 347, into the corporate limits of the City of Kerrville, Texas. Said tract generally located in the 3,200 block of Loop 534 Veterans Highway.
All right. Mr. Paxton again.
Thank you. This is 33.81 acres off Loop 534 and Olympic Drive. City currently owns this property, is under an agreement with the developer to develop single-family housing. Planning and zoning commission has listened to the request for annexation and zoning for R2, medium-density residential district, and approved that with unanimous vote on December 3rd. This is within strategic catalyst area number eight of the Kerrville 2050 Plan and the high school and the middle school obviously being catalysts in that area and the city property being an additional catalyst for housing development within the city property, within the city limits. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
A couple of things. This is in reference to the Lennar Homes out on the loop and that sizable project there. The other thing, I just thought of this. We're hearing from you a number of times tonight and there may be some folks who are watching who don't know who you are, but Mr. Paxton is the director of Development Services here and they handle multiple issues related to building projects, zoning, et cetera. So, anyway. Okay. Questions from the council?
Drew, I'm just curious, if you go back to the map before, just for my own information. So this segment is not within the city limits, but the other surrounding green space I see around there, is that annexed, not annexed?
That is not annexed.
So we brought in the junior high whenever they began their project, correct?
That's correct. It was annexed as part of their development project before they were going into permitting. This area to the north and west of the middle school is still outside the city limits.
Any other questions, counsel? All right. I'm sorry, do we have any speakers?
This is a public hearing?
Yeah, right.
And so, but we do not have any signed up at this time, but any citizen wishing to speak on public hearing item number 6B, please raise your hand now via the Zoom app or star nine if calling in by telephone. And after you have a motion and you vote on this item, Mr. Garcia did reconnect with the Zoom app?
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have no other speakers at this time.
Ms. Francina, did anyone raise their hand?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Close the public hearing at 6:38 and I want to ask for a motion on 6B.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2021-01.
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise the hand and it passes unanimously. Okay, let's see if we can get Mr. Garcia at this point.
Mr. Garcia, are you on the line?
Here now.
You're still breaking in and out?
Can you hear him now?
Yes, much better.
Okay, there you go. Appreciate it, thank you for this. I'm sorry, Roman Garcia, 934 Pecan Street, Kerrville, Texas, 78028. I did have a question. So I understood that this is for the parking lot to be expanded and everything, we're vacating that alley. And I think I heard, it might have been the mayor asked this question. I was just curious, it said it was in between Francisco Lemos and Hayes Street and is that, just because it's on both, is the alley is in between the two or is that referring to a previous structure, property?
Mr. Paxton?
Yes, the original alley was platted between Francisco Lemos and Hayes Street. The eastern portion has been closed by previous action on council. So originally, the original plat was 1890.
That's pretty much what I was just curious about. I have clarification and thank you for working and completed.
Okay, thank you. We are getting ready to look at ordinances, first readings, and there are a number of them. Are you going to read all of those in?
Yes, sir.
Ms. McLeannan, would you do that?
Yes, sir. 2018 Building and Related Codes, the following items will be presented and considered together as one item. 7A1, ordinance number 2021-03, first reading. An ordinance amending section 26 through 32 of chapter 26 Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas in its entirety by adopting the International Residential Code 2018 Edition for one and two family dwellings, regulating the construction, enlargement, alteration, repair, removal, demolition, conversion, occupancy, equipment, use, height area and maintenance of all one and two family dwellings and multiple single-family dwellings, townhouses within the city, adopting local amendments and renumbering section 26-1 concerning the moving of a house upon city streets. 7A2, ordinance number 2021-04, first reading. An ordinance amending section 26 through 31 of chapter 26 Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas in its entirety by adopting the International Building Code 2018 Edition, regulating the construction, enlargement, alteration, repair, removal, demolition, conversion, occupancy, use, height, area and maintenance of all buildings or structures within the city except one and two family dwellings and multiple single-family dwellings, townhouses and including the National Electrical Code as referenced herein, adopting local amendments and adopting a new section 26-38 to require a permit for the construction of a fence. 7A3, ordinance number 2021-05, first reading. Adoption of an ordinance amending articles 2, 3, 4, 5 and 6, chapter 26 Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas in their entirety by adopting the existing International Building Code, National Electrical Code, International Plumbing Code, International Fuel Gas Code, International Mechanical Code, International Energy Conservation Code and the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code 2018 Editions and adopting local amendments to each code. 7A4, ordinance number 2021-06, first reading. An ordinance amending chapter 50 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas by deleting sections 50-2 and 50-3, adding a new section 50-5, to adopt the National Fire Prevention Association 101 Life Safety Code 2018 Edition and adopting the local amendments to said code. And we do have one speaker signed up.
All right. Okay, by the way, you do that well. You read them well, so thank you. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. This is building code update for the 2018 codes. Kind of a quick overview, cover some items under Kerrville 2050 that this will mark off as far as the implementation plan. A brief update on fencing permits, FEMA policies, international, or excuse me, insurance service office ratings, the general code cycles and some major updates to the code. Previously, we've been working on this with the Building Board of Appeals since 2018. As you can see on the screen there, we've had several meetings with the board, some of those including a public hearing with local contractors and builders, council workshop in July and update for council member Hughes in December. And here we are today for our first reading of the ordinance. Kerrville 2050, several of the implementation items reference the update of codes, including zoning code, subdivision code, building codes and other development-related codes. Checking off a few of those implementation items. C5.12, engage third-party services to assist with the review of existing codes and ensure they're consistent with and support Kerrville 2050 Plan and the Community Neighborhood Chapter. Housing Chapter H2, maintaining the quality of and value of existing neighborhoods. Economic Chapter 2.12, ensure that development services processes and existing codes and ordinances are not impediments to the development and redevelopment within the city. One of the new requirements that we are adding is a fencing permit. Currently, any fence over six feet tall requires a building permit, but with the update of the zoning code, it changed some of the fence height requirements depending upon where the fence is located. Now, we alluded to that on the short-term rental case that we had earlier. The zoning code in the front yard limits heights of fences to 30 inches in front of the home towards the street, but if anything over six feet, we don't require a permit for. So there's a gap in those two codes, leaving some room for error for citizens who are checking to see if they need permits, but may not catch that the maximum height is 30 inches. So we are recommending a new permit for any fence over 30 inch, 30 inches will be required.
Were we, what was it before on the, on the front?
Over, well, there were no requirements for fences in the front yard. They could be six, seven, eight feet tall. The only requirement was anything over six feet requires a permit.
Right, but the 30 inches that we, that we, that we adopted through the zoning ordinance?
Yes, that is a new requirement, limiting.
And there was no limitation before?
That's correct.
Okay.
As we went through the zoning code rewrite, we've got quite a bit of public feedback on prohibiting those fences, especially six-foot privacy fences.
Now Drew, with this, this 30 inches, the house that we had just talked about, that we just approved for a short-term rental, so either side, whether it's on, was on a side street or on what would be considered the main street, no matter, no matter where that fence is, as long as it's along a street?
No.
No. The front yard is defined as the front of the structure to the front property line. So in the case that we looked at before, that site plan, the side street would be allowed a fence up to the property line, six-foot height for privacy and safety for the pool.
Yeah, okay.
So it's only from the front of the property to the front property line, which is defined as the narrow side of the lot where the property faces.
Mr. Paxton, I'm just curious on this and I'm sure you've addressed it in the past, I don't remember, but as somebody who has built their own fence in the past, taught me quickly how complicated it is for the average homeowner to get a permit for this?
So the goal for this is to be a flat rate or a flat fee, so that there's not a lot of calculations involved, just where's the fence going, how tall is it going to be, so that staff can review that, make sure it's compliant with the zoning code. Anything over six foot tall does require footing inspections to make sure those footings for the poles meet the building code.
Okay.
And then, so you would have to call for an inspection of the footings, call for inspection for final construction. The permit is online or will be online through my government online, so it should be a quick turnaround for those permits.
Okay, so if I wanted to build a fence in my backyard, I get online, I request the permit, I pay my, whatever that fee is, and I get a permit.
Right.
And it's a six-foot, under-six-foot fence, it's not, no footing, is there any inspection process? Is there a final inspection?
There would be a final inspection, just to check the height, to make sure that it met all the requirements under that application.
Okay.
Andrew, if you, if you had a chain link fence that was four feet high and you wanted to add a six-foot privacy fence in front of it, behind it, right beside it, you would still have to get a permit because you are, even though there was one there, you, and you're just extending the height, you'll still have, someone would still have to get it.
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions on?
I'm assuming something, but I wanted to ask you. We talked, talk about the International Residential Code, Building Code, Electrical Code, Plumbing, et cetera, Fire Prevention. I'm assuming that when somebody gets to sell, they sell their property and they can show that they were compliant with all these codes, it would probably help them in selling that property. Am I right? Maybe I should ask Gary or Judy.
City would be involved in that transaction.
Sure, yeah.
But I would.
I mean, they could say, this code, this code, this code, we're all compliant with, so.
Say your typical mortgage inspections is not the same process as the building permit. So, your typical mortgage inspections is not the same process as the building permit, but it would be certainly additional information for the buyers.
Yeah. All right, Gary or Judy, would, would, would that, would it help somebody?
But it's grandfathered. I mean, if, if you buy.
Lot of new construction, Bill, houses that are being built starting today.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, but if, if you are in that.
Question, that is not something that would normally come up in a multiple, multiple listing item. It's not a question that we would put forth. I wouldn't feel comfortable as a realtor stating that because I can't verify. So, no, I don't think that really comes into play in this.
And we'll give an inspector something to say that, that you need to go, that the, the buyer needs to go back and check on that themselves, but other than that.
Well, seem like to me it ought to be a, a, a good, good housekeeping seal of approval, seal of approval, but, okay, anything else, council? Yes?
Drew, what international code were we using prior to adopting this one, if we adopt this?
We are currently under the two thousand and six IBC.
Two thousand and six is what we've been using, and we're trying to get to two thousand and eighteen.
That is correct.
Now, is this code more restrictive or less restrictive than two thousand and six?
Depends on which section. So, there, there are new requirements, there are updated requirements. Many of the changes that have been brought over those multiple code cycles, some are just reorganizing the chapters. Some of those changes are significant life safety improvements within the code.
Yeah, and I, and I understand the, the life-saving issue. It's, I'm wondering, because there's been such a climate of Kerrville being hard to do business with as far as development or builders, local builders go, is this gonna make it less restrictive for them in, in the grand scheme of things?
Not necessarily more or less restrictive. It's more consistent with the rest of the country. So, most of the commercial permits that we have coming in have to make a formal request to the building official to use any updated building code.
Okay.
Otherwise, they have to design backwards to the two thousand and six.
Okay.
So, the majority of our larger commercial permits are coming in designed to the two thousand and fifteen or even the two thousand and eighteen already. All of your trades that are licensed by the state, they are required to meet current building code through their trade associations and their licensing through the state. So, they're very minimal changes to the actual projects on the ground that we're seeing. It's really just getting our codes up to date.
Right, so it's actually harder for builders because we have to go back to what was in place in two thousand and six?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, I'm glad, or you, go ahead, you finish, then I'll.
You have a comment at the end as well.
Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, also recommends the latest, the two latest published editions of the I codes, that'd be the two thousand and eighteen and now the two thousand and twenty-one that it's been published.
Okay.
Any disaster recovery or disaster mitigation, those projects, if funded by FEMA, are required to update to the most recent code, regardless of the city requirements. Additionally, FEMA provides up to seventy-five percent cost for post-disaster with public assistance programs. That can be increased to eighty-five percent for those projects if the city has adopted the last two, one of the last two additions. The Building Code Effectiveness Grading Schedule is part of the ISO rating or the Insurance Service Office rating. Kerrville currently has a very good, very strong ISO rating. Making sure that we are up to date on the consensus-based building codes is a part of that formula for the Insurance Service Office. Here's a list of the codes we are updating. Of course, the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Fire Code, International Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing Codes, the National Electric Code, excuse me, the International Energy Compliance Code, and the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code is a new book with the two thousand and eighteen version. All of those requirements came out of the IBC and the IRC previously. So, that, that encompasses all of the safety regulations for pools and spas. Additionally, for the International Residential Code, new in two thousand and fifteen and updated in two thousand and eighteen is Appendix Q. Appendix Q is specific to tiny homes, one of the Kerrville twenty fifty items. H one point six was to consider making provisions to allow appropriate alternate housing styles, styles such as tiny homes. And so, the International Code Council did address that in two thousand and fifteen. It has different regulations for tiny homes, such as ceiling heights and exit windows, since they are, they are a much more constrained construction than your typical single-family home. This was a spreadsheet that was distributed to council previously. There's a large number of changes, at least on paper, again, a lot of those were reformatting, some were updates and revisions based on trades or based on life safety changes. Go back a slide. Presidential Code, from oh six to eighteen, we're looking at about three hundred and seventy line item changes, from the commercial code up to seven hundred and forty different changes. Again, some of these were just reformatting and aligning chapters in one book to the next book, so that it was much easier for the designer to find where those requirements are. There are several updates to the International Fire Code. Again, some making easier allowances or less restrictive, some more allowances or more restrictive, again, based on life safety and those events that have happened across the nation and across the world. And with that, please answer any questions.
Go back one, one, one more. So, the, is, under Fire Code, twenty eighteen code is less restrictive in some areas than previous code additions, which will benefit our local business owners.
That's correct.
And then examples below that. Good. Okay. Counsel, any questions, further questions?
I have, not specifically for, for you, Drew, just, just for something that I'll refer to later as an item on a future agenda. So, I know that, first of all, I'm not an expert, and that you guys have done yeoman's work getting this to us today, that it has been looked at by boards and commissions, and it has been looked at by professionals, so I have a lot of faith and confidence in all of that, that is before me, and that we have been given many updates and lots of information, and I think that, that you have done your due diligence. Now, I'm gonna speak for myself and just say that this is the first time that I'm seeing this in draft form, and I've only had a couple of days, and I know we have a second reading, and I know that's the way it goes sometimes, and so I hear all of these things, and everything that I'm hearing is great, I, and I will take the next two weeks to digest this a little bit further, and I do personally plan to approve this tonight. However, I'm just wanted to comment that, given the length of our agenda, sometimes it's hard for me to digest this much information in a relatively short period of time, and it is not an offense to the city. You have done your preparation and your work. I'm, I'm just putting that out there. So, between now and then, you know, I, you know, I look at the draft, and it says, well, in this code, we're taking this section out, so I wanna go look at that, you know, and I'm gonna, just, you know, I, just, I have to take a piece over here, and I have to pull a piece over there, and I'll have two weeks to do that. So, that's just a comment, not a question, and thank you. I know that, that you and many others have worked very, very diligently on this. I just wanted to throw that out there.
If I may, kind of Cliff Notes version of each of those ordinances, a lot of the local amendments that were adopted in the two thousand and six code were reviewed and carried over, so that the local amendments are not changing. Some of that is a lot of the line items that you're seeing struck through. There are some administrative sections in each of those codes that we don't use. We have our own administrative sections, so we've.
So, there's a lot of just looking and, and.
By and large, the, any local amendment that we had before, if it wasn't already updated in the code, we've carried that over.
Sure.
So.
And I have full faith and confidence in, in what you're doing, but I also wanna do my, what I, what I consider to be my due diligence as a council member as well, as, you know, as, appreciate all the work that you guys put into this.
Any other questions from the council?
I have, I had some comments and a couple of questions. The permits that are already in the pipeline, they will be grandfathered? They will go to the new code?
Any permit that's already been approved is based on that set of plans and the code that it was designed on.
Designed for.
Any permit that's in the application process is same thing, however it's been applied for. Any permit moving forward, if they're in design now and submitting soon, they would need to work closely with the building official, the fire marshal's office, to make sure that they're in accordance with that. There, there is certainly some overlap, as you know. Big commercial projects take some time to design, so some of these projects may have been started six months, a year ago, but we've had a lot of conversations with a lot of those big projects early on, that this was our goal, this is the direction we're going. So, most of the projects that we are aware of, in progress or in design now, are already looking at the two thousand and eighteen code.
Good, that was my second question, that, that.
If anyone does come up as a surprise that we weren't aware of, they can work with the building official and fire marshal to work through those.
Okay, because it, it, it shouldn't cause problems, but it could, so.
Yes.
And then, are you, are you planning to communicate this en masse to, is there some way to do that to builders and contractors that you have addresses, emails for, that kind of thing, just to say, hey, this is where, when, when it's finally passed, this is where we are?
Yes.
Okay.
One of the other benefits of using my government online for our permitting software, we have all builders' email addresses, because they have to have an email address to submit a permit. So, when we made the call for the public, public town hall meeting for builders and developers, we use that email list from my government online. So, we'll use the same, that same list to distribute this out.
Okay.
As well as any press release and other social media that Stewart handles.
Has it been well received?
Yes. The public hearing, again, most of the trades, the licensed trades are already using those codes. Again, the architects and the engineers that are working in the building code are familiar with multiple codes since they work in multiple jurisdictions, but all understand that that's part of the process, and the updates generally are easier to work with and beneficial.
Well, I wanna congratulate you. I, it, you, you've done a yeoman's job, and, but I have had a number of people coming from other cities who say, why, why is this city not using two thousand and eighteen? So, it's time we, it's, it's time, and I'm glad to see that we're there. Going forward, this can change often. Is our plan to change every three years, every six years? Do, do we have, do we have a, a plan for that, anything?
Would you, Stephen Riggs, our building official, is on the line. Quick answer, the, the goal is every other code cycle, just 'cause, again, some of those in, or not annual, but every three-year updates, some of them are just word changes and typos, anything major, we can address at any time and bring back to council. But consistent with FEMA policy and other policies, the goal is every other cycle, so that would be every six years. So, the next code that we would be looking at would be the two thousand and twenty-four code.
And the other thing that, I think about a year ago, the governor tried to unlicense plumbers. That didn't happen, right? Because this talk, still talks about licensed plumbers and, yes.
Yeah, the, the code, the International Code Council code references licensed plumbers. State of Texas, those are licensed through Texas Plumbing Board. See what this legislative session does with that, whether it goes to a different licensing agency or stays with the existing board.
All right, good job, good job. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
I just have one, and it's, you, you may have already answered it, but let's say somebody has submitted plans, got those plans approved, but doesn't plan on developing or building for, say, a year. Are those plans still good, or do they need to come back now to?
Building permit is good for six months. Any, any inspection or any part of that process just continually extends that six-month window. So, if we have a permit that was issued today, that permit is good for six months. If they get towards the end of that and they're not ready to start working on that project, they can submit to the building official for an extension up to six months.
Okay.
Anything beyond that would be required to resubmit for a new permit.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we do have one speaker. Roman Garcia.
Thank you, Roman Garcia, nine thirty-four Beacon Street. It seems like a lot of my questions were answered during that discussion between council and Mr. Paxton, so that was good. There are a couple of clarifications that I probably got a little bit confused, that I'd like to ask council, and hopefully they can be referred to Mr. Paxton for immediate response. This, this actually wasn't addressed, though, is, I was just curious, is there any record of history of why we haven't updated to the latest IRC? And I know we have one coming up for the two thousand and twenty-one period. I'm not suggesting that we should probably wait till then, so I'm glad we are updating to the two thousand and eighteen one. I think it's probably long overdue, but is there any history or record of why we haven't done this before?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
No.
He's not sure, okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I can hear that. And then, a couple of clarifications, are we planning on having this second reading on January twenty-sixth at the next meeting? I know a council member probably expressed something that he or she may have liked more time to review it. Are we looking at still going forward with the second reading at the immediate next meeting? Are we gonna give more time for this?
Yes, it's scheduled for January twenty-sixth.
Okay, thank you. And then, specifically, I had a couple of clarifications for the fencing that council was talking about earlier. What is, I understand now if it's more than thirty inches, and this is any new fence, and what I understood is that any existing fence would be grandfathered in. So, I guess I have a question is, I know if you have a six, or a six-foot fence, you have to, with the new code, get that for a permit. One of my first questions is, what is that timeline for this type of permit? And are the fees gonna vary, or, I think I heard it was probably a set fee?
Part of that will be discussed for the second reading. We're gonna work.
Okay.
To show what that permit process looks like, since it's obviously not gonna be as involved as a full building or a full remodel.
So. Right.
Our typical building permit turnaround is approximately ten days, or at least ten days. And the flat fee we'll be discussing as a fee schedule adjustment, parallel with the second reading.
Okay, thank you. And then, and then I guess I just wanted to clarify all. And if this is just for new fences, including if you have to get a repair for your fence, tear the whole thing down and, and rebuild it?
Yes, this would be all fences over thirty inches tall.
Will, will be grandfathered in or need a new permit?
Any construction will require a new permit.
Okay, okay, I think that answers it. Okay, thank you, counsel, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Then, I'm going to ask for a motion on all four items under seven A.
Make a motion that we approve all items under seven A.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We got a motion, a second, all in favor, if you'll let be known by the raised hands. Okay, thank you, thank you. The. You guys, who's gonna do the COVID?
Derek.
Okay, all right, okay, just didn't want you to get away, so. Jeremy Hughes is with us tonight. Jeremy is on the city staff, related to the fire department, and works on emergency management, and he's been a real key to us in looking at response to COVID. And then you'll hear from the chief here in a little bit. All right. Eight A, would you read that?
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-seven, second reading, an ordinance amending ordinance number two thousand and three dash sixteen, which created a planned development district, PDD, for the property known as four zero one West Water Street, by adding tattoo shop as an authorized use for the property.
Okay, this is second reading. Counsel, do you have any questions? All right.
I move that we accept. Ordinance number twenty twenty. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-seven on the second reading.
I'll second.
Good, a second, Brenda, okay. Um, all in favor, counsel, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Now, eight, eight B.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-six, second reading. An ordinance annexing an approximate five-acre tract of land known as fifty-two seventy-five Highway twenty-seven into the city's corporate limits, adopting a service plan for the property annex, establishing the zoning for the property and an adjacent property known as one hundred Airport Commerce Parkway East as an industrial and manufacturing zoning district, IM.
All right. And this is related to the Kildare Mountain Manufacturing. Uh, second reading, counsel, any questions? Okay. Then do I have a motion and a second on this item?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty dash two-six.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, raise the right hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Okay. Uh, nine A, please.
The following resolutions will be presented and considered together as one item. Nine A one, resolution number zero six twenty twenty-one, a resolution concerning air quality permit RN one six three three zero one, which is approved, which if approved, will authorize the construction and operation of a permanent rock and concrete crushers quarry at a site south of the intersection of Almooney Road and State Highway twenty-seven, expressing concerns regarding public health, safety and welfare implications due to the impact of the operation, and urging thorough review of said application. Nine A two, resolution number zero one twenty twenty-one, a resolution adopting the city of Kerrville's twenty twenty-one state legislative priorities for the eighty-seventh Texas Legislature, and we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
All right. Uh, okay, Ms. McDaniel.
Yeah, so we coupled these two together because they are related. You'll see in the second, um, item related to the state legislative priorities that there is, uh, one of the line items has to do with responsible management of quarries and, and rock crushing operations. We have a number of those in this area, as you, you all know. So the first one, nine A one, is specifically related to the permit that's been requested for uh, an area over behind Fox Tank. Uh, Fox Tank has a paint bay in that area. Um, it's also over behind the new KMM location. Uh, we're concerned about rock crushing. I think they're already operating as far as mining for gravel and sand. It's a wet mining operation. Uh, but, uh, we, we have a upcoming hearing by the TCEQ and we've, need to submit something by the fifteenth, and so this is, um, our, uh, would be, if you all approve this, it would be our opposition to that rock crushing operation. The KEDC is also doing something similar, uh, we believe at their next meeting. Um, so, um, we'd be happy to answer any questions on that. And then we'll have EA come up to do nine A two, uh, with a few slides.
On nine A one, I just, I just was thinking about this and, and I want to also express clean industry as something that I, I am certainly for. My only concern is that I don't really know exactly what that operation entails and, and I know that'll all happen through, I just, I understand what we're doing and I understand the timeline, just that I'm looking at a resolution for, for a, um, opposing something that I don't really unders, that I don't really understand as far as the operation and, and, and the quality. That said, I, I, I will repeat that I, that I am in favor of clean industry, but I just want to be very careful balancing that with property rights.
Sure. But to your point, though, I, I would agree. We, we don't know exactly and that's, this, this is the way we find out. We register a concern or complaint.
Okay.
We sort through that, uh, through the TCEQ process.
Okay.
Maybe there's some mitigation if, if, you know, the parties agree, that sort of thing. Um, but, um, I understand your concern.
Mr. McDaniel, correct me if I'm wrong in this, but city council was made aware of this several months ago. We explored options for, because it's outside the city limits, we have no actual control over what happens in that, I mean, we can't say they can't do it. I mean, we can't oppose it other than filing a resolution saying we're against it. Is that?
Yeah, that's probably something we want to talk about in executive session, but, um, in general, we did have outside legal counsel look at it, Mike did, and from a, more of a zoning and city regulation standpoint, not from a permitting TCEQ standpoint. Uh, we also had some conversations with TexasOD about the access and traffic, uh, and trucks. Uh, so, um, yeah, we have been looking at it for some time now.
Well, I think that, I want the citizens to know that we're not just rubber stamping this.
Right.
We have had discussions about it. We are concerned about it. We have explored options. And there's really, our hands are tied in so many different ways of what we can do. So I, I, I just want the citizens to know, I don't think anybody on council is cheerleading this project. We're not advocating this project. It's just, it's outside our control.
Well, I think, I think, uh, from the time I heard about it, um, I, I realized, okay, we've got an area out there that is very important to us with Avery's, Fox Tank, now Kildare, and you interject a rock and gravel, uh, operation coming through that area, um, and the dust that's produced and everything else creates some problems. And, uh, particularly, I mean, for, for manufacturing. So I, I really applaud this, this resolution.
And Mark, how have they, are they actually doing rock crushing now that we know of? It hasn't actually?
I don't think so, because this would be for permanent. They might be doing some, as some, I don't, I don't, but I don't think so. I think they're just doing some wet, what I call wet mining
Okay.
for sand and gravel.
All right. You have any other questions? And we're gonna, we're gonna go with, uh, nine A one and two together.
I think.
We do have somebody signed up on nine A one, though, so we might have to take it separately.
All right. Do we have a speaker?
Yes, sir. We have Roman Garcia. Mr. Garcia, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I actually have nothing, uh, further to add or comments or any questions upon, uh, after what's been discussed between council and staff. Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, then, uh, should we vote on nine A and then go to, uh, nine A one and then go to nine A two or bring them together?
Yes, sir, that'd be fine.
Bring them together?
One at a time.
Okay. All right, on nine A one, uh, what is your pleasure there? What's, do we have a motion?
I will move that we adopt resolution number oh six dash twenty twenty-one.
All right. We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Right, all in favor, if you'll let me know by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously. Now we go to, uh, nine A two. Okay.
Good evening, uh, mayor and council. We've got just a very brief presentation regarding, uh, nine A two, uh, which is a twenty twenty-one, uh, city of Kerrville legislative program. Uh, as you may know, uh, the Texas State Legislature convened today, uh, January twelfth. Um, that is, uh, by statute, uh, set regularly, uh, every two years. They go for the regular session for a hundred and forty days. Um, some folks would wish that they met every hundred and forty years for just a couple of days, but not the case. They are back in session. Uh, that regular session, uh, of course, does have the possibility of, uh, subsequent special call sessions, really at any time. Uh, but, uh, regularly, they meet for a hundred and forty days every two years. Uh, by statute, uh, they are only required to pass a budget, uh, and that's for the next by in, uh, starting September twenty, uh, one, uh, and then going through to, uh, August of twenty-three. Of course, they do, uh, have quite a bit of other business that typically occurs, uh, during that hundred and forty days. Uh, some key dates, as you may know, uh, pre-filing for bills started actually last year, uh, November ninth, uh, twenty twenty. Uh, thus far, we've got about seven hundred and forty-five bills and or resolutions that have been filed. Uh, in total, uh, last year, there were almost eleven thousand, uh, bills or resolutions that were filed. So quite a bit to keep track of and see what all is being filed. Now, not all of those moved forward. Uh, there were just under two thousand, uh, that actually got, uh, passed, uh, and moved through the process. I think it was right around seventeen or eighteen hundred. Uh, but, uh, quite a bit to keep track of, uh, throughout the year and then fortunately, uh, Mr. Hayes does yeoman's work on, uh, keeping staff alerted, uh, to the bills as they are being filed and moving through the process. And, and then, uh, we, we take a look at them and see what time or type of ramifications, uh, those may have for our city operations and our community. And of course, we also rely on Texas Municipal League to also keep us, uh, very aware of those, uh, bills as they're being filed, moving through the process, so. Uh, they all must be filed by March twelfth, uh, by, by statute, and then, uh, the adjournment, sign and die. Uh, adjournment occurs on May thirty-first of twenty twenty-one this year. Uh, so the governor has, uh, twenty days to either sign or veto bills after that. Uh, so it goes to, to June twentieth, which is usually right around Father's Day. Uh, and then most of those bills typically take effect around August thirty-first, which is the end of the, the state's fiscal year. Some of them, uh, can actually take effect immediately. Uh, and so, uh, we have to, you know, carefully watch some of those effective days to see when they actually, uh, do take effect. So the purpose of this legislative program serves really as a guidepost, uh, for the city in respect to, uh, various positions and priorities, uh, as legislation moves through, uh, the process. Uh, as we mentioned before, out of those eleven thousand bills that may or may be filed, may or may not be filed, uh, we don't always know, you know, what may be come up. And so these are, uh, written in somewhat broad terms, uh, to be able to, uh, just provide a voice, uh, for the city as, as the session goes on, uh, and as those, uh, bills are filed and as the process ensues, uh, it directs city staff to be able to communicate, uh, this legislative program to the appropriate legislators, uh, both our local folks as well as other folks that, uh, you know, may be, uh, on committees, serving on committees or as going through that process. And then, uh, authorize the city staff to actively pursue or oppose passage of, uh, specific legislation in congruence with the intent and direction of this program. Um, some of the specific interests and goals that are outlined, uh, within, uh, this legislative, uh, program essentially are the preservation of home rule authority. Uh, the very, uh, reason why the city organization exists and is authorized by our local citizenry. Uh, and then opposition to any preemption of that local authority. Uh, the ability to maintain predictable and stable revenue streams, uh, as currently outlined in Texas Constitution, uh, in our municipal charter, and then the expanded applicability of the use of hotel and motel taxes. Uh, and that one, uh, is in regards to legislation, which has actually already been filed, uh, in regards to the use of hotel motel taxes for, uh, parks and recreation type operations. Uh, and that's both, uh, acquisition of properties as well as, um, you know, some of the other, um, functional elements, uh, that we provide. That's particularly, um, uh, acute within this community because we do have, um, both, uh, the very strong tourism industry as well as very strong parks and recreation system. So we just expand the ability for us to utilize that already existing tax, uh, resource that's collected by our local hotels and motels. Uh, retaining the authority to maintain and regulate the city's municipal rights of way. Uh, that has also become very acute, uh, over the last ten years or so, as we've seen, uh, more and more companies want to come in from a communication standpoint, uh, and be able to utilize municipal rights of way, uh, power poles, uh, and other things, and sometimes, uh, creating conflicts, especially with existing utilities that may be, uh, within our rights of way. The expanded ability to sell small and unusable park space, uh, this has been on our radar for some period of time. Oftentimes, uh, in the past, we're trying to clean this up, uh, with new subdivision regulations, but unfortunately in the past, um, subdivision regulations have allowed for very small, what we'll call remainder tracts or unusable land, uh, to be dedicated to the city. Uh, and then unfortunately, it, it basically takes an act of Congress for us to be able to, um, e- even sell those to an adjacent property owner that may want to be able to, to bring those within their property. And so, uh, right now it requires, uh, basically a citywide, uh, vote referendum, which is very expensive, uh, very cumbersome, takes a lot of time. So, uh, just trying to get some more flexibility for that. Uh, we have actually had, uh, a, a bill filed in that regard. Uh, and then review of regulations for, uh, rock mining operations. Uh, we spoke about that one extensively in the last agenda item. And then enhanced state funding for, uh, mental health issues, and that's a, that's a pretty broad topic. But really, uh, just, just providing more, uh, encouraging the state to provide more resources in that regard. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
What do you anticipate on the mental health issues?
Mr. Hayes, I don't know if you've seen any bills in particular that have been filed in that regard yet, or?
I think it's going to be tied up, uh, to a lot of the police bills and, um, some of the reforms they're looking at, there's already been several bills filed with respect to that issue. And I think, you know, some of that is just making sure we've got resources so that when the police are called out to a, you know, mental health situation, um, perhaps they have more training, um, uh, additional resources involved. And that's just something that I think, uh, our legislature is going to look at, just like others as well.
Okay, good.
So this should give us clout if those things come up, right?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Have we done this before?
No, no.
Didn't, didn't think we, we had.
It helps give some direction to our, uh, delegation, you know, Mr. Murr and Buckingham. So if you all approve this, that's the next thing we'll do is we'll send it off to them and have a conversation with them, make sure they understand it. Mike's already been having conversations with, uh, Mr. Murr. Uh, but this will help them to understand what y'all's priorities are.
We're happy.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay. Uh, Ms. McLinen, do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. And, uh, I want to hear a motion in a second on this item.
I move that we adopt resolution number zero one dash two zero two one.
All right. Second?
I'll second.
Second, thank you, Brenda. All right, all in favor, raise, uh, the right hand. Okay, and it passes unanimously. All right, nine B.
Construction agreement with S J and J Construction LLC for the Guadalupe River Utility Crossing Project in an amount of one million thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Okay. Uh, are you going to present that, EA?
Yes, sir. I can, um, happy to answer any questions you may have. We've talked about this project a number of times with city council. Uh, as you recall, this is being funded by, uh, a one-point-five-million-dollar, uh, Texas Water Development Board grant. Uh, it will help us have, uh, more secure utility resources, uh, crossing the Guadalupe River, uh, there at the Lu- five thirty-four bridge. Happy to answer your questions.
Give a timeframe.
Um, we should be engaged with them, uh, within, you know, the next month. We'll have contracts signed. And, uh, we would anticipate, you know, by the end of February that they've mobilized, so. Uh, we're hopeful, we're, we're going to push hard to have this, uh, in place by the summer. Um, you know, unfortunately, um, you know, uh, it, it may be mid to end summer by the time we have it fully constructed. Um, but, um, we, we hope that we can get it done by summer because we think it's going to be a hot, dry one, unfortunately.
That'd be great.
Good, good.
Despite all the horribleness of this, when it happened, we're really, we're, when, in the end, we're coming out much better. So it's, it's good.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions of council? Do we have a speaker on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Then, me here, a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion that we approve the construction agreement, the S J and J Construction for the Guadalupe River Utility Crossing.
In a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, thank you, and it passes unanimously. Chief Maloney is coming to, uh, give us a presentation regarding COVID.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. So, little update that'll be brief regarding COVID nineteen, so do have some good news to share since the last time I did give the council update. Currently, in Kerrville and Kirk County, the number of active cases is four hundred and thirteen. So with forty-eight deaths in Kirk County, twenty-six hundred ninety-four recovered, and twenty-three are hospitalized. So the hospitalized number, uh, was as high as thirty-five at one point. And that is something that is always concerning and that we're always watching in the healthcare. That, that does impact the healthcare, definitely having our regional hospital and EMS services here. The local update, uh, for here, the next free public COVID testing is currently going on in Fredericksburg at the Lady Bird Park Pioneer Pavilion. And that is from Monday, the eleventh, through Friday, the fifteenth, eight to four. So this is a five-day testing period. They changed the way they're doing the testing moving forward in twenty twenty-one. And so it's a walk-in, no physician referral or appointment necessary.
Do you know what kind of tests they're doing?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Do you know what type of tests they're doing?
They're still doing the PCR test. It'll be the cheek swab.
About 24 hours, do you know the turnaround?
They're doing pretty well. The last time that they were doing, people I know were getting it about 24 hours. It was getting pretty quick results. So, they seem to streamline that process. The meetings that we've had is the community leadership meeting. We met last Thursday, the 7th, and we also did the community report out. And since then, we've established our vaccine task force. We established it last Wednesday, the 6th, and we have another meeting coming up on Friday, the 15th, and I'll explain more on that. The COVID vaccine task force update, so at the direction and working through Mr. Mayor and the leadership group. So, our goal was to implement a community vaccination plan, and our goals for that, we wanted to determine the Phase 1A tiers. And looking at our Phase 1A tiers, we had 3,400 healthcare workers in Kirk County, 1,100 long-term care facility residents. And then, we wanted to determine the Phase 1B tiers, and one of those we did see through the Department of State Health Services is that we had over 14,000 residents over the age of 65. We wanted to establish a preregistration process and to design a community vaccination clinic. So, the key stakeholders that were part of the task force, City of Kerrville, Kirk County Emergency Management, Peterson Health, HEB, and other private practice pharmacies. And in regards to the COVID vaccine task force, what we're using and utilizing is we've been working with the flu clinic since 2011 as a mass antibiotic dispensing or vaccine site. So, emergency management has been involved with that, working with HEB and our Peterson Health partners. So, we have the footprint, we have the ability to do the vaccinations on a larger scale. What we're waiting for at this point is the vaccines, is what we're waiting for in the doses. So, we will be ready, and we are prepared for that. Some reminders overall regarding COVID, it still remains a public health threat, so even getting into 2021. So, remain vigilant, do not become complacent, and I encourage everyone to educate on the vaccines from reliable sites. Utilize the Department of State Health Services, utilize the FDA or the CDC. The Department of State Health Services has links to all those. So, it improves the education piece when it does become available. You can make that decision for you and your family. And as always, continue to wear a mask to reduce the spread of the virus. Continue to recommend the social distancing, stay home if you're sick, and most of all, be patient and kind. So, we are working on it. We are working on the vaccine, on the plan. When we get there, we will definitely keep council informed and our citizens informed. With that, I'll take any questions.
Chief, you know, there's a lot of anxiety in this town in regard to the fact the vaccine is not here. And I know you and the city and Peterson Health, and today I made calls to Austin, are trying to move it along so that we get some vaccines. I'm glad of the task force and what you're planning, and who all you're working with on that, and I think that's really going to be positive. One other thing I would say to the community, none of us on city council have gotten a vaccine. We have tried to say, well, we're on city council, jump in line. You know, we're waiting our turn, as is right, but anyway, I'm hoping and praying we get some vaccines soon.
Yes, sir. The positive news in regards to the vaccine is that the Pfizer vaccine that was distributed out in December, people are receiving their second dose. So, I may not be talking Kerrville, but I'm talking nationwide. So, we are headed in the right direction for that. We're waiting for the allocations. When we do get the allocations, we'll be on top of that. We'll get that information out, and we'll get that information out to the public quickly.
Can I touch just a minute on the testing? And for members of our community that cannot get to Fredericksburg for the free testing, when is the next free testing date for Kerrville residents here at the Ag Barn or, you know, at the Youth Event Center, whatever name they're calling it now?
Good question. So, for the free testing, so before, we were scheduling testing two weeks, and they were doing it one day. So, they would come in for one day, they would do it from 8 to 4, and then they would move to another site. So, since then, it moved to Spartan Medical, so it changed companies with the state. And so, they're setting up five-day sites in one community or one county. So, the plan for that is to keep it in the Hill Country region and then move. We are currently working on early February, but I do not have a specific date at this time, and we're waiting to get confirmation for that.
Okay. So, their only option right now for free testing is to go to Fredericksburg?
Correct. Other than traveling farther to San Antonio, correct. And then, we'll keep posted, so, because we're going to see it in Kendall County, and we'll see some of the other ones. So, when those do become available, we'll definitely make sure that the public sees that. So, and as soon as we get ours, I know our emergency management coordinator for the county, he's working closely for that to be able to secure that date, but didn't want to release it right now.
So, chief, a city has to, they have to contact the State Department or the state and ask for, it's not like somebody's sitting up at the state and saying, okay, here we go, everybody gets so much, X amount. So, we have to keep after them to, in order to get our vaccines.
So, for the vaccines is coming from the Texas Department of Emergency Management in coordination with the Department of State Health Services. So, they created a team that is looking at all factors for all counties, and then they're making that determination of where the vaccines are going. So, it's not coming to the city or the county, it's actually going to private providers. Peterson has received it, so HEB has received some, and some other private providers at that point, and that is their distribution plan at this time. And I was on a call on Monday, and that is currently where they're moving forward. They are working toward potentially the state-supporting vaccine clinics to come in, but once again, it's a distribution, it's a supply and demand is what we're looking at. So, once they receive it, so we'll know more. It's going to get better.
There's coordination efforts with the providers that have already been authorized, correct, in our community?
Correct. So, everyone had to sign up for that.
There's multiple providers.
Correct. Yeah, it was put out back in, I believe, in November to sign up if you wanted to be a vaccine provider for that, and then you had that opportunity. If you could meet the cold storage, you might get the Pfizer. So, if you could not, it would be the Moderna. And so, it was a process for that. So, there are people that, there are agencies or private providers that signed up for the vaccine, and they will continue to receive that moving forward.
Do you know if there's a list of those providers?
There are. So, the list is available on the Department of State Health Services website. So, if you'll go to the Department of State Health Services and search COVID vaccine, you'll put that in Google, it'll come right up to a great page with a lot of information and some good messages from Dr. Hellerstadt in regards to the vaccine process for that. And it's a little bit moving on there, but it will say the list of the vaccine providers where you can find them. So, and that is updated pretty regularly on there. They even have a map available, a Texas map, so as we move forward with the vaccine process.
And chief, there was a website that was given in the paper earlier this week that it did say it's not up and running, but that when it would be up and running, you could register there. Is that?
For us, for our county?
I'm not sure where the website.
I think that's the county coordination that they're trying to put together with the volunteers and to coordinate so that they can start sharing the list for the community.
When you go to it, it says that site's not up and running, it's not available yet. So...
Kirk County, the emergency management coordinator and then we're working on a preregistration process for both a phone bank and the ability to do an online. I do not know if that was the link for that, but they are working on that, and we should see some more.
So, that's not in place yet?
Correct. So, we'll see that hopefully end of the week or beginning of next week for that.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, is there going to be maybe a link on the city site that will direct you to the county site for registration?
I don't know.
So, we definitely want to provide information to our citizens so they can get it at either place for that. So, we're going to work toward providing more information overall for the links, the links to the Department of State Health Services, so then you can kind of go one, and maybe it'll link to the Kirk County.
Okay.
But still, we got to get to Kirk, and still got to get...
All right. Do we have any citizens who signed up for a question?
No, sir.
No, sir? Okay.
Thanks for the good work.
Thank you.
Not as fast as everybody wants, but thank you.
It'll be different.
Okay. Do you have items for future agendas, council?
I do. And this comes from what I was talking about earlier, when we get large pieces of information. I'm just going to speak for myself and just mention that there are times when either I may be out of town for the weekend or at tournaments, and I was telling Mark earlier that I might take my little laptop and go sit, you know, when my son's not playing a game, and that doesn't happen all the time, but I do, I just wanted to have a conversation, maybe next council meeting, about options we may have to extend the time that we have to look at the agenda. Whether that be, you know, I know we have to post for 72 hours, but I'm not sure if there's a reason we can't post longer than 72 hours, and even give ourselves time to repost if something comes up or changes along the way. So, if you, Mr. Mayor or council, if you would allow us to have that conversation at our next meeting, or just to put it on a future agenda, I would appreciate that.
I would agree with that. I think similar situation, I was out of town this weekend, got in late Sunday night, and by the time I got into the agenda, you know, it was midday Monday, and there's just not much time to work on these items. And I know that's some constraints, but, and I don't know if there's any rule of regulation that we have to meet on Tuesday. City manager, is there a...
The council sets their meeting date and time.
We don't have to meet on Tuesday.
It's in your code now that you...
It's in the what?
It's in your code now.
It is?
Tuesdays is your regular meeting, 6:00 PM.
Okay.
So, you could change that.
But it's not something that's written in stone that we can't change. I'd be open to that discussion at least.
All right. For the sake of the folks viewing, here is our notebook for tonight's meeting. It's rather sizable. All right. Anything else in the way of future agendas?
Yes, sir. So, I'm reading that you are okay, because I have to have consensus, or at least two people say, yeah, let's put it on. So, okay.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, Mr. Allen, he asked for an item to be put on the agenda regarding the water pressure.
Right.
Yeah.
And that requires a council sponsor or consensus of this group now to put it on an agenda.
Where is Bluff Ridge?
Yeah, you want to comment on that?
Okay.
Northwest?
Northwest Hills?
Is that one?
No, it's over.
That can just be handled by staff?
We're going to try to.
Northwest area.
Northwest part of town.
Forest West.
Uphead hills and that area.
We will be in contact with Amos, and we did receive the petition. Staff has already got it within our work queue to do some water pressure testing on that hill and get back with those residents.
Here, it's where it goes up this way, but it has the fire lane on the other side.
Yeah, I know. I just wanted to make sure that we all kind of knew where that was, so...
It's just west of Coronado.
Yeah. Way up on top of that hill.
Oh, okay.
We're doing a little bit of exploration, and we'll be getting back with those residents.
That'd be great.
Okay. So, back to my question, is that a staff-handled item, or does it need to come before us?
So, staff can attempt to handle it. We weren't made aware of the concern until, I think, yesterday or earlier, maybe Friday? Yesterday. Yesterday. So, they're going to investigate. If we can sort things out, we will, but if they still press to be on a council agenda, then they have that right. So...
All right.
It may take more time to...
Let's see if staff can address it. If not, they can come back and appeal again.
Yeah. Okay. We'll see what we've got, have a conversation with them, and they'll let you know how that goes.
But with the understanding, if we need to put it on council agenda, we will.
Yes.
But hopefully, staff will handle.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, in regard to appointments, you want to handle all of these here or in executive session?
If I could, could I just at least go over 11D?
Okay.
Because the public discussion and the motion leading up to the appointment of the zoning board of adjustment members, this was at our last council meeting, both regular and alternates, the discussion may have been a little confusing, I think, for all of us. So, I'd like to make the following motion for council to affirm our intent, and that motion is to reappoint Pablo Brinkman and Paul Zolin as the regular members, and then to appoint Mike Asmus from an alternative member to a regular member, then appointing Michael, Colleen, and Jim Sandy into the alternate spots. And that's my motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we got a second? Okay. Discussion? Okay. All in favor, a little bit under the raised hand?
We do have one citizen speaker signed up for this item.
Okay.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. Then, would you invite them in?
Roman Garcia, Mr. Garcia, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'm sorry, I meant to confirm with the secretary that I didn't want to speak on this item any longer, but thank you very much, and y'all have a good night.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, then...
I'm sorry, you can go ahead with the vote.
Yeah. Did we vote?
We started to.
Okay. All in favor? Yeah, okay, all right.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, we're really prepared for 11B and 11C.
Okay.
As far as appointments.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. 11B and 11C, is the discussion on either of those? Okay. Can we vote on them together?
No.
No. 11B is appoint members to the library advisory board?
Yeah, okay. All right. All in favor of 11B?
We need to give you a name.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
So, with this one, we've, I just want to say thank you to all of those who had submitted an application, and we appreciate it very, very much, and we did have more applications than we had, than we have room for appointments, but we are reappointing Carol Wickman, or I move that we reappoint Carol Wickman, and we will appoint new Bev Avery. And I believe we also need to reappoint Tom Moser.
And you're making that motion?
Yes.
And I'll second that.
Are you going to motion second? Discussion? Do we have anybody to speak to this?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor, raise the right hand, in any opposed or like fashion. All right, then, what about 11C?
11C, appoint members to the Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition.
And for this one, I would like to make a motion, we had as many applicants as we have positions. So, what we will be doing is reappointing Randy Beano, and do you want me to give the position or the...
No, I don't think...
I don't need to do that, okay. Randy Beano, reappoint Randy Beano, LeAnn Fitzpatrick, and Sabine Kunsel. Then, we will be appointing new Joseph DePree, Thomas Hurt, Joseph Pizar, Nikki Saraj, and Cynthia Tate.
All right. Can you make that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
You got a second? Okay. Any discussion, and do we have anybody to speak to it?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, if you'd raise the right hand, and it carries unanimously.
And I'd just like to add, that committee is going to be a well-rounded committee. They've just, they've got, they've got lots of bases covered, and I think it's going to be a very effective committee.
Great, great.
In regards to 11A, I'd go ahead and make a motion also regarding the building board of adjustment and appeals.
Right.
That committee...
Any discussion on the building board of adjustments and appeals?
Kind of make the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we've received stipulations. It actually has nine members and seven regular members, two alternates, so we still have room to appoint other people on that. And I would highly encourage our building trade industry, if they would like to be involved, to please submit an application. But I'd like to go ahead and nominate Mac Edmiston, Jennifer Hyde, Daniel Laurie, Bruce Motherall, Bob Brew, and Mike Walker to serve on that board.
Good.
I'll second that.
Second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, raise the right hand. Okay. We will go into executive session. Mr. Attorney, 551071?
Yes.
And 551072?
Yes, need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session under items 551.071 and 551.072.
All right. Okay. We will go into executive session, come back and report. You got a, you got a, you got a second?
I just.
Okay. All in favor? Okay.